Kevin, let me know when we're all good.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our supplemental roundtable meeting today, Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined in the room thus far with Commissioner Snyder, Commissioner Treese, and Commissioner Willie. Kevin, do we have Commissioner Phi on Zoom yet?
We do not.
Okay, please let us know when she joins.
Yes.
She will be joining at some point. So I'm going to, we have four different topics on our roundtable agenda for today. We have a morning session, we'll break at lunch, then we will reconvene at two P. M. in an executive session for Clean Water Services, and then we have one more county topic after that. So at this juncture, for the first topic, I'm going to turn it over to our Government Relations Manager, Erin Doyle.
Good morning, Board, and thank you for this additional time. I am here merely to provide two roles, introduction and Vanna White on the slide deck, because we have our illustrious team from Van Skoyek here to talk to you about what we, what they project is going to happen at the federal level with the new administration and the new Congress. So this is an information time for you to ask questions of our highly skilled team about what we think two thousand and twenty-five is going to look like. And with that, I'm waiting for our slide deck and killing time to pop up here in the office.
So we are a new board as of this year.
We am.
So I realize we don't have the same camera angle support, but at least by voice, if Commissioners could go around the table and just introduce themselves to our Van Skoyek team, I think that would be great. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. That's my voice.
Yeah, Jason Snyder.
He's from District Three. Commissioner DePicefi was just able to join us in the room. Would you please say hello for our Van Skoyek team?
Oh, good morning. Morning, team.
Great.
Good to be here. Sorry I'm late.
Sure. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Good morning, Pam Treese, District Two.
Chair Willie, District Four, the best district.
Thank you very much. Let's start over.
It's really sad.
And oh, on a personal note, thank you to my colleagues and to staff for joining us for a long evening last night to do the House District Thirty-four appointment. I was really pleased that we had every member from the Washington County Board and the Multnomah County Board. And also today Clerk Moss has made cookies for us, and I'm, I'm having a double dose of cold brew this morning. So that cookie is going to make sure my stomach is a little settled from all the caffeine. So all that personal stuff aside, take it away, Erin and Van Skoyek team.
Well, I've introduced myself, so I'll just go ahead and let Van Skoyek introduce themselves.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Erin. And good morning to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to do this today. It's, it's helpful for us to have this type of interchange at the beginning of the year, especially given the very momentous time and environment we are working in Washington, D. C. right now on your behalf. So thank you for this invitation. We really appreciate it. I'm going to allow my team to do their introductions, but I just, well, and I reintroduced myself. I met with, we have met with many of you, but there's a few new faces. So my name is Jim Crum. I've been with Van Skoyek Associates going on my seventeenth year. I've had a background in working with the federal agency programs in a former life, my first half of my career, and mostly representing in my specialty, and what I enjoy most is working with local and regional governments. And my whole career has been involved with that, including working on Capitol Hill in the appropriations arena, trying to fund those programs that benefit you. In the last seventeen years, I've kind of migrated towards representing local and regional governments. I'm a member of the Van Skoyek Associates Municipal Team, a senior member of that team, as all three of my team members here are members of that team, because we draw, we have this specialty towards, towards this area. So I'm very fortunate to be working with my team, the three here. We have the support of the entire firm of experts. But these three people you see on the screen today are your dedicated team, and accumulatively, they have over twenty-five years of experience in working with municipalities and county governments. So with that, I'll hand it over to John Fuller.
Thanks, Jim. It's a pleasure to be with you all this morning. My name is John Fuller. I've been with Van Skoyek Associates for over fifteen years. I worked on the Hill before that. I'm part of the municipal team, but I also have background in higher education appropriations, which is my main focus, transportation. My wife works for the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee. And so by osmosis, I know a little bit about transportation. And I, I'm, I also do a lot of S. E. C. work in telecom and have, you know, very much enjoyed working with Erin and met some of you and enjoyed that too, and look forward to talking today about what we see happening going into this year. And again, just to echo what Jim said, I think it's going to be a very interesting, interesting year, so. Maggie?
And my name is Maggie McGrane. I round out the team here. I've been at Van Skoyek for about two years. Prior to that, I served some time in the Senate with the Health Committee, that's Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions, just as a refresher on the Washington alphabet soup, and also spent time with their counterparts in the House on the House Ed and Workforce Committee. And it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Erin and Stocker and Pablo to try to advance the county's priorities.
So Erin, would you like to just, there, there we go. Okay, so today, this is the kind of flow of information we'd like to share with you today on today's agenda. We'd like this to be as interactive as possible. Please stop us at any time if you have, you have questions. We've divvied up some of the slides, so John will be presenting a few of the slides and Maggie as well, and then I'll wrap up at the end. But I'll kind of kick things off and talk about the federal, kind of a federal funding update. Some, next slide, please. So where we are in federal funding right now is that the one hundred and eighteenth Congress, the previous Congress, did not finish their work. So they had to pass the C. Rs, which I'm sure a lot of you saw in the news. The C. R. passed and extended the completion of appropriations bills with a new deadline of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. In that C. R., there was a need for additional disaster funding. FEMA is running out of funding out of their accounts, as well as other federal agencies. So they added a hundred billion dollars of disaster funding, of which twenty-nine billion went to replenish the FEMA account. There were other things that needed to be extended in that bill. So they extended the farm bill through September thirtieth. They delayed the payment reductions to Medicaid for disproportionate share hospital program. And what's not on the slide there, they extended the National Flood Insurance Program until March fourteenth as well. So these are issues that still need to be resolved or extended or reauthorized as they approach the March fourteenth deadline. In that March fourteenth deadline, it holds in limbo the appropriations bills that already been crafted and approved in, in Congress, but at least in the House and some in the Senate. But they, those bills are still active. And as long as they meet the March fourteen deadline or pass those, finish those bills between now and March fourteenth, your, your Woodland Hearth Public Housing Request, which we help support Erin on, is still active for two million dollars. And so if they pass these bills, it would trigger and allow those funds to be finally approved and then be committed towards being provided to the county. There'll be some more paperwork required at that point, but you still have that two million dollar earmark request in play. The other key legislation that happened at the end of last year is the Water Resources Development Act. It gets passed every two years and it authorizes water projects throughout the country through the Corps of Engineers and a few other federal agencies. I just wanted, I just put that on this slide, because I wanted to note that there was, when we researched the bill language, there was a fifty million dollar authorization for environmental infrastructure projects that the Corps of Engineers could participate in for the county. Now, I don't, we did not put that in. I think there was another water entity or interest that put that in, but it is a geographic authorization. You would be eligible to do projects under that authority, and I just wanted to note that, that that is in the bill and approved. So it might open up some potential opportunities, and we'll work with Erin to see if there's interest in doing that and do the right coordination with the Corps of Engineers to open up that, that opportunity for you.
Can I ask a question on that? I just need a little informational help.
Sure.
Is that with regard to, for example, the Willamette Water Supply Project? Or is this the Corps of Engineers Clean Water Services item?
It's not Clean Water Services. I checked with Pete.
Thanks.
So we think there's another entity that, I think there's a joint water authority that you might have regionally.
Yeah, J. W. C.
Right. So we believe they put it in, so they probably intend to use it. But again, what's very interesting about these environmental infrastructure authorities is that they're geographically based. So anyone in that geography, in this case, Washington County, which is specifically cited in the language, is eligible to use that authority. So through coordination, sometimes whoever put it in is willing to share that authority or do joint projects or what have you. I just didn't want it to, I didn't want to, I just wanted to say that it is a possibility, and I wouldn't rule it out. It may just take a little coordination. Maybe they're not ready to use the authority. Maybe the county is, or the Clean Water Services is. It's just out there to be used. If, and we can help with that coordination if, if you so desire.
Thank you. Unclear. Yep.
Okay, next slide. So a little bit about the administration, which starts in four days and with the inauguration on Monday. I, this is probably nothing new to you, but this is kind of their overarching theme. There's going to be strong effort to reduce the size of government and institute policies to do that. This DOGE entity, which is not an official department, but it has a lot of momentum and visibility. They're going to look at reducing costs within the federal agencies and reducing programs that don't fit in with their social conservative agenda. They're also talking a lot about America First, so all decisions will not, will be focused on what is best for America. Does it, does it help with, does it, does it help with strengthening America? Does it help with the economic growth for America? They're looking at everything through this type of lens. I will say that the role, that some of these themes are in Project two thousand and twenty-five, to the extent that they're going to use that playbook or use portions of that playbook is uncertain. I will also say that whatever they do, that there's a difference between campaign rhetoric and, and, and now what Congress and the administration is, is saying they want to do and actually what they can do. There's legalities involved. There's, there's executive orders that need to be looked at. There's a lot of hurdles to actually implement a new policy, and it's not something that they see that they may have been on the campaign trails are going to do immediately. There are a lot of things they're not going to be able to do immediately. And the, as this unfolds during the year, we are committed to keep our thumb on the pulse and look at when, when, when the steps are taken, where there's opportunities for influence and feedback and information, especially with Congress, who's going to want to know the impacts at the local and regional level. So it, it just, it's not something that they can flip the switch on, which they sometimes talk about. It's something that's going to take a lot of, a lot of process and procedures. And with that, we'll dive a little deeper and talk about the first hundred days, and I'll let John take the next couple of slides.
Thanks, Jim. So obviously, the first hundred days of any administration is usually a big deal. They try and, you know, and I think the Trump administration has already talked about, you know, some of their goals for that. And you've had Congress discussing some of their goals, also specifically reconciliation, which is a way to basically get around the sixty-vote threshold usually required in the Senate regarding funding. So there, there, I think they've laid out a very ambitious agenda, but again, that's, that's nothing new. And I think, you know, they're going to pursue executive orders. There is, you know, there's going to try to, he's, the administration is going to try and come through on some of the campaign promises. I think the big things, you know, are going to be related to tax cuts and immigration, and they're going to look at how they can best do this through reconciliation, which we can talk about some more. But I think, you know, it's, it's going to be very, it's just going to be very, very busy, and there's going to be a lot going on. And I think that's going to be the main thing, is watching all these bills as they develop and watching all the administration priorities as they sort of like roll out, and then working with Erin and, you know, you guys and figuring out how to respond to that. I think the, the biggest issue, you know, they've, they've got to come back, and as Jim mentioned, they've got to do, they've got to resolve F. Y. twenty-five, and that goes until, you know, March fourteenth. They've got the debt ceiling, which needs to be raised. Now, they don't need to do anything immediately about that, because they can, you know, hold off on that through something called extraordinary measures. But that has to be addressed. There's a question about like whether or not they can do that through reconciliation or if they prefer to include that in a, in a C. R. or whatever they end up doing with appropriations for F. Y. twenty-five. You have the F. Y. twenty-six appropriations process, which would normally be about to get started. The President's supposed to put out his budget the first week in February. But because we haven't finished F. Y. twenty-five, it makes it hard. He's also, anytime there's a new president, you know, it's usually a little bit delayed. It's almost always delayed, or the whole appropriations cycle is usually pushed back. So anyway, I just think a lot of activity in the first hundred days, a lot of attempts to generate, you know, good public relations stuff in fulfilling campaign promises. And so you can see here, executive orders, immigration and energy. That was, that's sort of what they've laid out as the key pillars for potential reconciliation bill. They also want to address taxes. And then the question of, you know, how do you pay for the tax cuts? And how do you pay for some of these things? Because obviously, there's a return to fiscal conservatism in both chambers. And so I think that's the most concerning thing, I think, for our municipal clients and for other folks, is where are the potential cuts going to be? So, next slide, please. One of the things they've addressed, you know, started addressing, and I'm sure you've seen this, is cabinet picks and how these cabinet picks will affect policy and, you know, just day-to-day dealing with agencies. And so you can see, I think, it's, it's been interesting to see this process develop, because, you know, they put out some controversial, I think you could, you can reasonably say that, controversial cabinet picks. And initially, there was some pushback. Obviously, Matt Gaetz stands out as one that, you know, this, and the Senate is, is not as aligned with Trump as the House is, you know, and they only have fifty-three. And, and we'll get into the, the breakdowns about, you know, but they're not huge margins in either the Senate or the House. They're actually very, very tight margins. And so they have fifty-three senators. They need fifty to confirm, you know, a cabinet pick. Basically, it, so you only need to, if you lose three, it makes it very, very difficult. And there are three senators that tend to be sort of, you know, more independent-minded. Susan Collins from Maine, Lisa Murkowski from Alaska, and Mitch McConnell from Kentucky, who used to be the Majority Leader, but is now just a regular sort of rank-and-file member, but still in Congress. And so losing any, you know, if you lose all three of those, then things become much, much more difficult. But the Senate does seem, Senate Republicans seem to be coalescing behind the rest of the picks after the Matt Gaetz discussion and him dropping out. And I think you're going to see, you know, there are going to be hearings and there's going to be publicity about this stuff. But I, it seems like Republicans in the Senate are generally aligning behind the Trump picks. I think there are some issues maybe related to national security that might be problematic for some folks going forward. But, you know, one of the people who can, is, is Pete Hegseth. He had, you know, his confirmation hearing the other day. And, you know, given some of the stuff that they'd come out before, it went relatively well in terms of getting him confirmed. So we'll, you know, we'll watch how that plays out. And then obviously, you know, these people are going to bring, you know, their specific ideology to the agency, and we'll have to monitor that and see how that plays into the policies they set going forward and, and how that trickles down. So. Next slide, please. So one of the particular areas of concern is health policy, and a lot of people have concerns about R. F. K. and what he means for vaccines and, you know, medical access for women's health care. I think a lot of it is very unclear right now. I think he's, it's interesting, you know, what he's focused on. It's sort of this, you know, nutritional foods and getting rid of processed foods, but also the vaccine issue. And, and how much does that dictate, you know, the, the early policies that he tries to set? I think, you know, that confirmation hearing will be interesting. Obviously, like a lot of people, you know, feel very strongly about that. And I think, you know, he will get a, you know, a lot of tough questions, and so it'd be interesting to see how that goes. But I, you know, I think we look at it and we see, you know, the potential for some changes. But as Jim was alluding to, there's a lot that the agency can't do without explicit direction from Congress and funding from Congress. And as we'll talk about, you know, in a minute, you know, the people that really control the authorizing committee in the Senate is headed by a doctor from Louisiana. He's going to be the chair, he is the chairman for this Congress. And the, the chairman of the Subappropriations Committee in the Senate that controls the funding for N. I. H. is, you know, they're, they're sort of more moderate, and I think they will, they have their own ideas about, you know, any changes that should be made at N. I. H. and, and what the direction of the agency should, should be. So I think, you know, we're gonna, you know, we'll just have to carefully monitor that too. You know, what, what happens on the health care side going forward, because I think that's potentially, you know, the most likely, because in terms of, of things that might potentially get cut or where they might, you know, really try and make policy changes. So I think, again, just have to monitor that and be ready to respond quickly. So, next slide, please. Maggie, did you want to jump in and talk about how slim the margins are in both chambers? Unless there are any questions also. Sorry, I covered a lot, and if I'm happy to.
Could we go back to that slide? Because I have a, a question. I'll ask it now. You may choose to just take the question, hear the question, and then answer it later in a fuller, open Q. And A. Under Medicare and Medicaid, we here in Oregon, not just in Washington County, have been really trying to leverage all of the Medicare dollars, including for our addressing homelessness and the housing support. And by virtue of the regional voter-approved supportive housing services dollars, I assume you have the full background about how we were able to go from a very small funded system primarily through federal dollars to a much robust system, what we call the essential system, that has different entry points. And I'm so proud of our Washington County team, our staff members, for trying to leverage every single avenue of funding and partnering with our community-based organizations and agencies. I'm going to blackout on his name again, Erin. Our head, our HUD Regional staffer, Brian? Brian Kinney. He's very well informed of what we've been doing here, moving to work and all of that. So I'm just really, I, I don't quite know the question to ask you. My mind is really focused on what sort of scenarios do we need to think through in advance, so that if there are proposals before different committees, we're able to give our congressional delegation information about how these cuts will affect on-the-ground results and programs here in Washington County and the region? So I don't know if you want to take that now or for later discussion.
I, I think there's, I think there's a more detailed discussion to have on that, but I will say your concerns are valid, obviously. Given the priorities of the current coming, incoming administration, they want to pay for, as John referred to, this reconciliation package and this, these other priorities that they've been touting. And in order to pay for that, there has to be pay fours or cuts in other areas. And they, we, it's clear that they are looking at Medicare and Medicaid programs. And in the past, they've cut C. D. B. G. funding on an annual basis. There's been strong pushback on that by local communities. And when, to answer your question, when we see specific cuts for specific programs, we'll work with Erin on what type of education we need to do to your delegation, so they're armed with those talking points and letters of support from the county or maybe regionally to say, these are the, if you take this step, these are the impacts. And so we can advocate, be armed with those back in D. C. to push back, because I imagine a lot of communities will be doing that.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just jump in also. So they've talked like ballpark about two trillion dollars in cuts, and the only way to really do that is, as Jim mentioned, to, to Medicare and Medicaid. I don't think that's realistic, and I think that's already sort of a revised number. You know, to pay for the reconciliation, because reconciliation has to be paid for, you have to find places to cut. I think the interesting thing is given, and Maggie's going to talk about this in a, in a minute, and I alluded to it earlier, is that, you know, the numbers are really tight in both the House and the Senate, and so it's going to be, I think there is an opportunity to push back. And so I, I think that's what a lot of this year is going to look like, is trying to judge, you know, or, or find out what's going to be included, because these things are going to, I think, move very quickly, especially in the first hundred days. And then being able to get in touch with like the delegation, but also we have great relationships with like the committees that have jurisdictions, you know, I mean, it's going to be help is on the reconciliation, reconciliation piece. And again, we know that the Chairwoman from West Virginia on the Subappropriations Committee, so in terms of appropriations funding for that. And I think getting to them, but there's also, I think, going to be, you know, working with other communities, because I think this is going to be a nation, you know, it's going to, this is going to impact everybody. And so it's how do you build these coalitions to push back against, you know, these, you know, specific cuts or specific changes.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Well, I, I think we should proceed with the remaining conversation, but this, what we've really been touching on is the reason why we wanted to be proactive in having this session with you as early as possible in January. Because we, our team, and we're, I, I know through the full commission, we're very proud of our Washington County team, our staff. They're delivering services to our community each and every day. We also have them, the management team heads down problem-solving for how to solve our budget gap for this next proposed fiscal year and making hard decisions. And we're trying to get our, a grasp on how the extent of proactive scenario planning or problem-solving we need them to do in order to support our delegation as there is pushback and as things move fast through the committees. That's all.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
And, and thank you for the question. We did add a slide a little later in the deck. You'll see, late last week, we got an advanced copy of the initial cuts that the administration is proposing, or at least now, I guess the House of Speaker is proposing to pass reconciliation bill. And you'll see there's help programs. to pass reconciliation bill. And you'll see there's help programs on that. And we'll go over that when that slide comes up.
Terrific. Then I'll, I'll stay focused. Thank you.
Maggie?
Who? Maggie, you froze.
Uh, Maggie may not have a strong connection.
All right.
Oh, there we go.
Um, I have this having a, I have in trying to pass legislation. Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right?
Try, try again, Maggie. Try again.
Can you hear me okay?
Now we can. Uh, you're still cutting it, cutting it off.
Maggie, turn your video off. Turn your video off and just use audio. See if that, that helps. Might be trying to rejoin. Sorry. Nope, I think we're gonna have to go to Plan B, gentlemen.
Can you hear me?
Jim, I can, I can jump in if you want me to. Um, so we had the, the Senate flipped. Um, and so you went from slight Democratic control, very slight to Republican control. I, I mentioned this earlier, you know, it, it's not large. Normally you have to have 60 votes to pass anything in the Senate. Um, that's why reconciliation is an interesting tool. Um, you know, because you can, you just do it with a majority vote. Uh, I, it's going to make everything, again, very challenging for Republicans, because outside of reconciliation, you need 60 votes. So that means working with Democrats and that means that Democrats in the Senate have a fair amount of say in, you know, whatever legislation is going to get passed. And that's going to come into conflict with the House, you know, immediately because the House is more conservative and they only have a majority threshold to reach. So because of the, the slim majority that they have in the House, they can basically just pass anything and send it to the Senate. But in the Senate, you're going to need Democratic votes to pass anything outside of reconciliation. Um, so you can see sort of how things, you know, where things shake out here, 53, 47. Um, if it's tied, uh, the vice president casts the deciding vote. Um, and, um, I think that's good. Next slide, please, Erin. Here's the new Senate leadership. We've had the same, um, that's Majority Leader McConnell from Kentucky has been in charge for as long as I've been involved in, in, uh, uh, working on, in this area. And, uh, we have new leadership for the first time in a long time. Uh, Senator Thune from South Dakota is the new Majority Leader. Um, Barasso from Wyoming. We have good relationships with both their offices. Uh, Minority Leader is, will continue to be Chuck Schumer from New York. And Dick Durbin is the, the whip from Illinois. Um, but I, I suspect it'll be interesting to see how these folks work together, because obviously they're establishing, you know, a new relationship. Um, this will be Senator Thune's first time in control, what his relationship looks like with Senator Schumer and how they deal with, you know, some of the legislation that gets sent over from the House that might not be able to pass the Senate, um, because of the requirement for Democratic votes. Uh, next slide, please.
I think I might have sound working again.
Yes.
Good. You want to take it?
Awesome. Yeah. My apologies in advance. I'm having about as tough a time with my wifi on the road today as I think the 119th will have in passing any legislation. So I will continue to rely on my team to jump in where necessary. So thank you so much, John. Um, as we all saw, the elections play out in November. The House, um, is going to maintain an even slimmer majority than they had in 118th. Um, this is going to make working across the aisle especially important, which of course isn't as easy as it sounds in a hyper partisan environment. Uh, Speaker Johnson also has the unenviable challenge of trying to wrangle a lot of dissenting, uh, GOP factions to move a very aggressive, uh, agenda forward. Um, we'll head to the next slide.
Maggie, I'm just going to add a footnote there to, to that slide, um, and to emphasize the point that Maggie made. There will be, there's, there's members, there are Republicans who are the Freedom Caucus, who are going to vote no on any spending whatsoever. So there will be defections on the Republican side on the, on the Speaker Johnson is going to try to pass, which means as, as John pointed out in the Senate, Republicans have to work with the Democrats in the House to get some of their, to get their bills passed and find some negotiation room there, uh, to, to get anything done, because it won't be a slam dunk of all Republicans voting in block, uh, with, with some of these Republican bills.
And just to flag real quick, on, on top of that, there are 30 Republicans that have never voted for a debt ceiling increase. So that's going to wipe out a huge chunk of, obviously he's got, really he has, and Maggie will talk about this, but it says 219 to 215. But as you can see at the bottom, it's really a two bit margin until April, when they do some special elections for people that moved over to the administration and for Congressman Gates who resigned. Um, so i- it's, it's just going to be really interesting to see how they work within these margins, because it's going to be really, really, really tight. Um, and the other thing that's interesting is that there's, I, Jim mentioned the Freedom Caucus, but there's about 10 people that have never voted for a spending bill either, on top of the debt ceiling increase. And so if you, you, you know, it, you're going to need Democrats basically in the House as well as the Senate to, to pass anything. Again, reconciliation, there might be a path forward, but it's super tight also.
Commissioner Trese had a question.
And I'm just trying to get in, I'm just trying to get my head around composition issues here. I don't know the size of the Freedom Caucus. Can you help me with that?
It's like, it, actually, I, 16, 17? I may be wrong. Is it a little bit larger, Jim?
Well, I'm sure that there's float in there too.
Yes. Yeah.
I understand. I was just trying to get a, a, you know, a, an idea. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Um, as Jim and John emphasize, um, this is one of the smallest majorities, um, of the chamber that we've seen in modern history. So leadership here, while it hasn't changed significantly from the 118th, you see a lot of familiar faces on the screen. They have some enormous challenges added them with a very aggressive agenda. Um, unless there's any personal tidbits Jim and John wanted to add in terms of the leadership. Um, I know John is going to outline for us, um, exactly what Congress is going to try to prioritize in its first hundred days.
Um, the only thing that I would add, thanks Maggie, is that, um, Mike, Speaker Johnson, um, part of the reason they had such a, a tumultuous and potentially, yes, or a little bit difficult year was that, um, almost any member could file a motion to vacate, which would have required another speaker competition in the House. Um, and they're changing the rules slightly for this Congress. They're raising that vote threshold and this was negotiated last year and has been renegotiated from one to nine. Um, but again, it also, it just emphasizes how blocked in the speaker is, because if there are nine people, you know, that, that's less than the total Freedom Caucus basically could, you know, all get together and basically file a motion that would require a new vote on a new speaker. So if he does anything that they disagree with, um, they have the potential to oust him. And that's made getting legislation through the House like very difficult, because they've held this over him. And the problem is, is that he's in some ways tried to appease them. Um, the problem is, is that the sort of more main street Republicans have now pushed back and said, well, you know, we'll oppose you if, if, if you go do something that's too far from what we're looking for. So again, uh, the speaker is in a very, very just difficult place in terms of trying to manage his caucus and get any sort of legislation, you know, through in such a, a tight margin. Jim and Maggie, was there anything else you guys want to add on that piece? The first hundred days, again, just very, very busy and a lot of commitments during the campaign. Um, so obviously have to continue working on FY25 and get that resolved before the March 14th deadline. Uh, began work on the FY26 budget, um, and appropriations process. Uh, it's really tough to do that until, um, you deal with FY25, but you have to start that work or else you just get too far behind. Um, I think, you know, the normal appropriations process is supposed to finish by the end of September. That never happens. I think it's happened one year out of the last 15 or something like that. I think we'll probably see an appropriation cycle for FY26 that stretches until the end of the year, potentially into actually 2026. Um, I think it's just really tough to say where they're going to end up on FY25 and 26 until we get into sort of the process and see how some of this stuff plays out. Obviously have to increase the debt limit. Again, they can use extraordinary measures for a while. Um, but I think by June, they have to do something. And so there's a question about, do you include the debt limit on whatever you do with the CR in March, or do you do it on reconciliation taxes? Um, so taxes, you know, at one point there was a theory that they'd like to, they can do two reconciliation bills a year. And there was a, a theory that they wanted to do immigration and energy, um, upfront and then do tax maybe in September or later in the year. I think there has been a back and forth. And again, you've sort of seen this is, um, it's, it's governing through like social media where you put this stuff out and you sort of have these public, you know, fights on Twitter. And then somebody sort of emerges and, and that's the way, you know, some of this stuff is getting done, which is really interesting. But it just, it highlights the need to be able to quickly adapt to the situation and be responsive to whatever sort of pops up that day, because again, they're committed to moving legislation very quickly. And we need to be able to, you know, talk to you guys and then be able to go back and, and talk to our folks on the Hill and allies and make sure that our, you know, what we're advocating for is being listened to. Um, so I think what, you know, it seems like they might be leaning towards doing a big reconciliation, you know, bill, which would include taxes, it would include energy, it would include border stuff. Um, you know, getting something like that drafted and passed is enormous like task, but again, committed to doing that. And then confirmation hearings. You saw, I think a couple of slides ago, how many, you know, people they're trying to confirm. That takes an enormous amount of time and resources and stuff like that. So they'll continue through that process. It seems to be again, moving, you know, more smoothly than it looked like it might have at the very, very beginning. So, um, we'll continue to monitor all of that, update you guys. And I think, you know, obviously there's going to be stuff we're going to have to respond to. So, um, next slide, please. So, uh, just a list of other things that need to get done and that could potentially get done. Um, we talked about reconciliation bill, immigration, energy, tax policy, uh, farm bill, um, expired last year. They've extended it. That's a huge bill. Um, there didn't seem to be a lot of consensus about the path forward. The House and the Senate had very different ideas. It's huge, obviously, because of SNAP and how important that is. We don't expect any sort of, you know, stop in funding, but they're going to have to address that. Uh, National Flood Insurance Program, um, that's going to be huge. Obviously that's become, you know, a massive issue. Tax extenders, um, the Trump initial tax cuts expire at the end of 2025. They're very committed to making sure that those become permanent or at least get extended out. Uh, supplemental disaster funding is something that needs to be addressed probably in the next month with the California wildfires. Uh, broadband, um, you know, there, there have been a bunch of programs that were sort of COVID era, uh, COVID era programs that funded a lot of subsidized broadband. There's a lot of interest, bipartisan interest in continuing that. Um, but nothing, they weren't able to pass anything last year, um, before that expired. So I think we'll, you know, we expect them to go back and revisit that. Um, and just a lot of change at the agency level. You're going to see a completely different approach than you saw the last four years. And it'll just be really interesting to see, you know, how different, you know, nominees put their imprint on those agencies. So, um, next slide.
Before you leave that, could you talk a little bit about the workforce development reauthorization?
I'll let, I'll let Maggie handle it. She's kind of our local expert on, on that subject.
That one got pretty close in this, um, last Congress. Unfortunately, um, it wasn't able to make it across the finish line. There was pretty broad bipartisan support. It did pass the House overwhelmingly, it just never made it to the Senate. It was at one point in the first draft of the CR, um, but after the initial version was, uh, torpedoed via tweet, uh, they went to a much more scaled down version and it didn't make it in the next draft. Um, we're anticipating this will be one of the, um, not, not a top priority, um, as tax and immigration reform kind of dominate the, the congressional debate, but, um, it'll definitely be a top priority. Um, once some of those, um, bigger Trump tickets are addressed. Um, we're hoping to see, uh, the House Ed and Workforce Committee take the lead here again. They've got a strong base to work on from the last Congress. So fingers crossed, we won't be pushing this into a six-year overdue situation.
Thank you.
Next slide. So this, this is the slide that I was referring to. So these initial cuts to pay for the reconciliation bill released, I think late last week on Friday, or we got an advanced copy. And it starts to give an indication of what the Speaker and in coordination with the White House is looking to, uh, create pay fours to pay for the reconciliation bill. These list of cuts are supposed to save the federal government five to five and a half trillion dollars over 10 years. But you can see the pattern of, uh, health programs, um, and other programs that, uh, they're targeting for this. Uh, this is the negotiation step one phase. And there'll be a lot of Republicans in, who depend on these programs in their district, who will not be supporting these type of cuts. So a lot of churns still to happen and a lot of back and forth. But this kind of, we want to put the slide up here, because it really gives an indication of where they're trying to, trying to go as far as cuts to pay for the new agenda that's, that's being proposed.
And if I can just interject here, the GR team took this information and we're now reaching out and working with HHS to identify where those cuts in the, in those specific programs will impact county budget, um, conversations. We're doing that, uh, writ large across the county. We're still in that process. We'll be, as we get firmer grasp on the numbers of what exactly comes directly through federal appropriations, um, putting that all together as part of this hundred days exercise, community development is obviously an HHS or two of our big ticket and, and housing departments. So we've used this list specifically and are working with HHS leadership to identify specific numbers for the county if we can.
So, thank you, Aaron, for saying that. This is, uh, Chair Harrington. There are two different steps that I, I have an idea. I use that word carefully so that everyone knows it's not well thought through. I have this concept. Thank you. Um, usually my concepts are a little more solid than an idea. Thought balloon. And that is, a first step that I think the board is interested in is just taking this laundry list, if I can call it that, and having an idea of where we have a dependency, reliance or vulnerability. Use any of those three words. Does it, does it touch on our service provision? Maybe a crisper way to put it. Period. Don't, you don't need to quantify it or qualify it, just that we know. And then I can imagine, because the staff is so excellent and does a lot of due diligence, never lets us get into contracts that would hurt our community, then go through the due diligence. Right? Cause we have both the federal stuff and the state stuff going on at the same time. Yeah. So it, it really helps me as one of five, because with the election results right away, I was hearing some very progressive elected officials fearing the absolute worst. And that's not the space that I operate out of. I'm very pragmatic. So I'm just trying to get a decent feel for what's in play. Um, or just, you know, have that sense that, yep, something's in play that could affect us. And, and then be more informed. And, and then be more informed through the process. So. What do, what do commissioners think of that idea? Is it silly or worth?
Makes sense to me. My only concern around that is I look at the, the first bullet repeal major Biden health rules at four hundred and twenty billion. And I don't know if we know what's, all the pieces there that could affect us. So that's, that would be the question. If there's more delineation there would be helpful.
I mean, it sounds like that's what your team is trying to do.
What I was afraid is sometimes our teams being such experts as a gross generalization, it's over analysis. Right?
Trying to almost prevent that level.
What she's asking us to do is not do the deep dive and try and come back with the perfect, but to come back with the what we have now. But yes, Commissioner Trese, we also do understand that there's some pretty broad categories of things here and we can't answer all the questions. So this first step maybe is asking us not to try.
Right.
Which is appreciated on behalf of all of the staff at Washington County because GR does our best to ask the questions. But then we need all these experts to answer them. And they're also working on their budget processes internally.
And there are some things that may not affect us for a couple of years versus over the scope of that five years.
But as things evolve, you're going to want to be able to get into the detail, right?
Exactly.
If something gets serious, then.
Yeah. And when it comes to things like repeal major Biden health rules, that is something we look to VSA to be like, what does that mean? Specifically, and I mean, they put a number, they put some words and then they'll also get, dig into the details. And that's where that constant communication between our teams, our team is really important. So I saw your head pop up, Commissioner, if I wanted to see if I spoke over you. Okay. Just double checking.
I'm leaning back.
I'm trying to read my cues in rooms.
No, I'm, I'm tired for them.
And I mean, the one that's involved SNAP reforms is like one of those areas where VSA and I have been talking a lot because we know how vital that is, this program in our county that we do administer. And everything else we're still digging into.
Well, here's a very naive question. If they go through reconciliation, right, and I believe that needs to happen by March fourteenth, right, or kick the can further down the road. But let's say they go for that big old bucket. Yep, SNAP reforms, twenty-two billion dollars just gone. Okay? I realize that's all across the country. I'm trying to understand, will that affect our, our SNAP distribution here in FY for proposed FY twenty six or beyond? Right? It's that real high level. At what point might there be the time, on a timeline, these impacts, right? That's what we're trying to figure out. Or are we going to have people that are going hungry as of if it passes by March fourteenth, by before July first? Our next fiscal year. There you go.
So just a, a little clarification on the March fourteenth, that's the date for them to finish up the last appropriation bills of twenty twenty five. The reconciliation bill isn't on a timeline right now. It's just that they want to do it as soon as they can in this, you know, in the first hundred days, hopefully is their kind of their goal. But there's kind of too, there's no hard deadline for reconciliation. They're just going to try to push it through as soon as they can. But there's obviously a lot of fidelity missing in a lot of these categories is, and, and very good point in raising that. And I think we need to, and I'm sure a lot of counties and cities are asking the same type of questions. And so as we, as we get more information, more detailed information, that will help prioritize where the biggest pain points are here on this list.
So Jim, if I could put a finer point on the question too, is if reconciliation were to pass in the early part of twenty twenty five, it would be to offset tax cuts that are expected to become active in the tax year twenty twenty six. So that's maybe when we would see the cuts. Or would the cuts be kind of like instantaneously pulling it out of whatever appropriations? Or tell me, you will answer that question when you see a bill is also a legitimate answer.
The when the tax cuts would take effect, whether it's the next filing period or whether it's immediate. I, John, do you have a feel for that? I'm, I'm not sure.
I do think we need to watch out for the, the fourteenth deadline because I think that there's going to be a lot of pressure to, to cut. You're not going to see twenty-two billion cut in, in whatever they do. I think, you know, it, it's, so either they have to pass all twelve of the appropriations bill or they have to do them in batches, or they have to pass another continuing resolution, which funds the government at the same level. And I think at that point, you'd probably fund it until the end of the year because I don't think, you know, it makes sense to come back in July and litigate, you know, three months of funding before the end of the fiscal year at the end of September. But yeah, the reconciliation piece, again, I think it's, it's just too early to tell. I mean, they could, that's, that's where I think the big cuts could be. And how they stagger those, you know, or what they have to do for accounting purposes, we don't know yet.
It's all, it's all, the reason that I ask these things or pose these ideas is really towards the goal of how can we make sure that our limited staff resources here are best used for preparedness to support you and our congressional delegation? Thank you for listening and helping. Next slide.
Ready for the next slide, guys?
So in addition to all this discussion about funding, I don't want to lose, I want to point out that it's going to be equal, I'm going to say equally important on the expected changes in the regulatory environment. So as you're probably well aware, agencies will implement regulatory changes on how they, on, on their missions and the policies that they govern that affect counties and cities. And Trump is always been very consistent to roll back regulatory actions. And the Biden administration added a lot of regulatory actions. So he has said going into the inauguration that there's a number of different ways that he will try to do this. One is through executive orders. Executive orders can be done when there's not a legal law governing the action. So he can repeal President Biden's executive orders if it's just policy and he plans to do that. We have done on that point, he said, he said he's going to write a hundred executive orders on Monday. But on that point, we have developed a full tracking system of all President Biden's executive orders that he put in play during his administration. And we're going to map those and track those to everything that, that President Trump's administration recommends and assess the impact and provide that information to Aaron. We've already set up that database and we're going to be doing that level of fidelity and analysis. Second, if it's a not executive order and in President, the administration, new administration wants to make another regulatory change that affects a previous regulation, that is not something he can do overnight. Previous regulations go through a very formal process of rulemaking, public comment and final rulemaking. And that could take up to a year or so. He will have to write another rule to change the original rule. So my point is some of the regulations he wants to change will take a year plus to make happen. But during that process, there'll be a window of opportunity for public comment. And we will track those as well and make recommendations and help draft and work with Aaron. If any rules that are being proposed, you want to weigh in on as a county, we'll help draft those responses. And then, and then I guess those are the two areas. It'd be executive orders and formal regulations that are governed by law. Because once a final rule goes final, it is in the code of federal regulations and has the power of law. So those are two areas. The last thing I want to say in that, it was very interesting in the Chevron deference change by the Supreme Court last year, which limited agencies' ability to write policies and regulations and interpreting law. There'll be probably a push by the new administration because they want to do, they want to have as much control over the regulations as possible. They may try to overturn the Chevron deference. So they have more control. And the Supreme Court has less control on interpreting regulations and law or law, or, or laws and making regulations off those laws. So what they pushed for in the Biden administration to have this change now is hurting them in terms of the regulation, all the regulatory changes they want to make. So we're going to track that closely and see if there's an effort to overturn that decision. But in summary, there's going to be a lot of regulatory activity and it will have an effect on public agencies. And we'll be tracking that equal, with equal importance and focus as we do the funding piece.
We have a question.
Can, can you, can you speak to, I mean, to me and what I've seen some of the rhetoric in the national media? There is some sort of a link between the Department of Government Efficiency and the deregulation agenda. Can you, A, comment on that? And then B, I didn't get to ask, early on, I, I should have asked more about like the, the government efficiency efforts, like I, other than seeing what appears like arguments being made in social media by, you know, figures of national prominence, like I'm not, what is actually happening on the ground or what is envisioned happening on the ground with that group? Like, you're saying it's not a department, but it has the name of a department. How does that? That's the second part of the question. But first, interaction between the deregulatory agenda and DOGE.
Okay, so, so great question. And so, so no, DOGE does not have any legal standing as a department. They are, they are basically making regulations under the title of being a department. And, and the new administration wants that because both two leaders of that, of the DOGE are business people. And so he wants recommendations on changing the US, changing the federal government, downsizing it, lowering the cost, getting, changing inefficient programs, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of philosophical ideas will come out of the DOGE. But to implement those ideas, again, goes back to what I just said, if there's, if there's a legal, if there's a law that governs how that agency performs, there'll be a new law that has to be written to change that. So it's not, again, not flipping the switch and saying, you know, that this agency is now going to be cut by half or a third of their programs are going to go away. Those programs are codified by law. I will say they do have the power of funding. So when the president develops their, his presidential agenda, which comes out every February, probably be delayed this year. But he can zero out funding for certain agencies. That's another way to get to those efficiency goals and put the onus back on Congress when they write the appropriations bills, whether to add that funding back in. An example of that is that President Trump one point O and the previous, previous administration, he did not support the arts or the humanities. There's the National Endowment of the Humanities, National Endowment of the Arts, two federal agencies. He zeroed them out in their, in his presidential budget and forced Congress through input from their constituents that they want, they use those programs, they want those programs. Congress re, re-put in the funding for both those programs to keep those agencies going. So there's a funding strategy here to try to decrease funding or disempower agencies that will watch very closely. But they cannot by a wave of the pen, remove an agency or remove a major chunk of an agency. That would take legal, a legal action, which is not, cannot be done quickly.
Thank you.
I'll just add on DOGE. This will likely be governed in terms of accountability and a lot of its operations by the Federal Advisory Committee Act. Even though DOGE, the department is kind of a scary name, it's really akin to say like Reagan's Grace Commission or Obama Simpson's Bowles Commission. So like Jim said, it'll have more of an outside advisory goal. The other thing I think is important to note is that the DOGE initiative is intended to sunset. So it won't be a new permanent sort of part of our government. The goal for DOGE to quote unquote delete itself is July fourth, twenty twenty six, which happens to be the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence.
Just to piggyback on, on what Maggie was saying, so DOGE can bring a lot of pressure, especially on the House side to Republican members. But it, ultimately, Congress decides the spending levels and they make those decisions. And I mean, truthfully, they normally sort of ignore the president's budget and, and do something similar to what they've done the previous year, which is why getting FY twenty five finished is so important to getting to FY twenty six because everything is sort of predicated on, on what happened before and how those things, you know, work out and what levels you end up at.
All righty then. Next slide.
I guess just a real quick, you know, what's the saying about the governor's budget?
It's a starting point, not the.
It's what, there's an acronym in there. I can't remember what it is, but basically the legislature throws it in the garbage can and they move on.
My colleague from Clean Water Service is saying proposes, disposes.
There you go. Is, is that along the same line as the presidential budget? I mean, he, he's done the zeroing out and those kinds of things. And they just go, yeah, yeah, yes. In your lane.
So normally, yes. This year, there will be like, I think, added pressure, especially on the House to, to do what the administration wants. But again, most of these programs have existed for decades. And there's a reason they've existed for decades. They're incredibly popular. They service communities all across the country. And so when it gets down to actually cutting those, it's a lot tougher, especially with the margins that we've discussed, you know, in the, in the House and the Senate. Sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're right. It's, the president's budget is only a starting point for the appropriators in Congress. Once it's sent over to Congress and they start the appropriations process, it's really just a starting point. So, and they make, the Congress makes a final decision. So our county engagement plan, just kind of backing up a little bit, looking at our overall goals or, or approach for this year. Of course, funding will be at the top of the list. Despite all the things that we've said, there will be a appropriation cycle this year. And I, next slide, we'll go in a little more detail about that. But we will be ahead of that bow wave and that curve and, and be working in support to Aaron on identifying projects for potential community directed funding and any other federal funding that you might be eligible for. That includes not just congressional directed funding, but having a very robust grant forecasting cycle, which we do every quarter and we look ahead at potential grants and the cycles that they're going to be released. And then seeking any federal funding, program funding that you may be eligible for as well. So we basically cast the net as wide as we can for any potential areas of funding that you're eligible for. And this all starts ramping up. Here we are in January. This all starts ramping up in the first quarter. So we are aware of that and Aaron and I and the team have had a lot of discussions of already being, being ready and getting ready for the trip back and the interaction with your congressional delegation. The same point in the second major area, we talked about that. We're going to be very, very focused on the changes in the regulatory world at the federal level and how that might affect you. And we'll have a very robust reporting on that, including our monthly reporting, which you already received, but any hot moving, fast moving item or issue. So you have at the most amount of time to react to, we'll be identifying those as they unfold as well, especially during this very dynamic transition period for the first six months or so. And then just overall, anything, whether it's regulatory or funding or something else, overall federal strategy and opportunities, we want to identify those for you as soon as possible. So you can offer an opinion or take advantage of those opportunities and we'll be advising you throughout the year on anything that pops up that may affect you. Next slide. So I just want to cover a little bit about the appropriations timeline and just dive a little bit deeper. So you kind of can see how it's going to unfold. We're working with Aaron right now and identifying high priority projects that would be competitive for congressional directed funding or requests. We did, and, and we thank the chair for providing us the SIP report from last year. We've done a full scrub of the SIP report and identified a shorter list of projects that align very well competitively for federal funding. And then we're now we're fine tuning and narrowing that down even more. So we're working to support Aaron on that effort. Around February third, typically, the president's budget will be released, which really triggers the Congress in doing hearings. Around February third, typically, the president's budget will be released, which really triggers the Congress in doing hearings and thinking about starting to draft appropriations bills. At that time, the Congress will give us deadlines um to submit project funding requests. And we'll track those and make sure those requests are in adequate amount of time, very high quality. We don't expect the president's uh budget to be released February third this year, probably later in February, which is typical for a new administration. Uh, February, March, as I said, I just said, February, March, we'll be submitting those requests. Those portals will open at that time. The time windows to submit funding requests will will be active at that time. Um, in April, your members will review the requests submitted by Washington County and make the final cut and submit the approved request that they approve to the committees for consideration and drafting into the bill. That will happen. The committees will work on those in May and June. And June, July, start drafting up those bills. At that time, we'll know whether you're in or out for your congressionally directed request. And that uh included the housing, your housing uh requests last year, made it through that June, July hoop where the committee actually approved it and marked it up in the bill. Um, September should be the time when they conference the bills, because September thirtieth is at the end of the fiscal year. It never happens, as John said, uh, they will probably use it as negotiations. Um, and it will slip into uh the next fiscal year, which starts October first. And sometime between October and December, uh, they'll do a CR. And the pressure of leaving for Christmas usually gets the final bills over the finish line and gets approved. Unfortunately, that did not happen this year and they spilled into March. And that's probably because of the national election. And the new administration wanted to have their opportunity to put their fingerprints on the bills. Um, so that is the realistic schedule, the 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 on book schedule and the realistic schedule kind of wrapped into one. Last point I want to say about appropriations is that, uh, because I don't, and I don't want you to be surprised in this rare occurrence, that the March deadline for the current bills that has one of your earmarks in it. If they don't meet March and they decide they want to do a full year CR, that would wipe out all the current bills that are on the books, the FY twenty five bills and all the earmarks that are part of those bills. That would be the worst case scenario. And it would be just make the government work at minimum funding levels with no appropriations bills approved and signed by the president. That has happened on rare occasions, but I don't want to say it's absolutely out of the question. So we are looking for them to finish the bills in March, but if they start talking full year CR, full year continuing resolution, we'll let you know if we hear any traffic along those lines. Because that would threaten all public agencies across the country's earmarks um and would prevent the completion of those bills, wipe the slate clean and then just start working on next year's bills. So just want to be realistic. Um, final slide, I think that's it. One more slide. Yep. So I'm happy to, uh, team's happy here to answer any additional questions. And again, thank you for allowing us to give us, give you this overview.
Um, so this is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm going to do something unusual and I'm going to start. Uh, because your presentation and the discussion and taking the questions along the way has helped me significantly. Uh, I came into this meeting really trying to figure out that question around preparedness. You know, how do I really um appreciate community fears? Uh, because each member of our community is, you know, uh, I respect that everyone has a right to their fears. Uh, but also being committed to collaboration in local government. So here with, for example, all of our cities, um, and we're at a time where we've transformed this agency to be very open, transparent and committed. Uh, so we ourselves, but also with our community, are being very upfront about our financial situation, how we serve the community, what funding we rely upon to do that and but especially state funding and federal funding. And you've really helped us ensure that our congressional delegation knows what our specific asks are and have value for our community and that they are present on the ground to celebrate those um victories. Uh, so, you know, I was really trying to look for guidance in how else we can support our congressional delegation, what kind of presence, whether it's in town halls here and those elected pre sessions that our congressional reps have. But because of this great overview, I don't have any questions. So I just wanted to start there, which is not to say that my colleagues, I invite my colleagues as always to have any questions, so. Uh, but one of five is out of play now. So commissioners.
Is is there a, and maybe Aaron, this is more directed at you, but is there a potential need depending on, and and this is more of a a style, a s- an advocacy style question probably. Does the county typically uh push in advocacy having elected officials actually either go to DC to advocate or do that locally to advocate directly with our federal elected officials or what is the style typically? And I'm sorry, that's an ignorant question on my part.
You're a new member of the commission.
So what's what's the? Calendar and thinking there there may be places where that's going to happen.
So one thing I will say is the uh federal lobbying uh arm is growing and evolving because we have been uh more reactive than we have been in the past. Where we do see commissioners going out to DC has been twofold. Traditionally, it's going to the NACO Legislative Conference, um, which goes to DC. And then instead of joining our Association of Oregon Counties at their uh meetings with representatives and senators from Oregon, we have Van Skoyek escort our our commissioners around and we highlight the things for what our strategic things are. The other place where we have gone back traditionally, and I don't know if this got changed this morning, so I'm looking at Commissioner Fai, um, is the J- the annual J-PAC trip, which is focused generally on transportation in the region. And then we do a separate Washington County based day, which is a combination of the county and the cities who have gone back. And we use Van Skoyek to help us set up those individualized meetings. The other places where we do, uh, we've been improving our advocacy um and direct showing to our delegation is inviting them into tours of things where we are building things, hoping to build things and the process of building things. Um, have needs, so we've um forced various congresswomen to stand on the edge of a very uncomfortable road and say, would you please send us money for TV Highway?
Or we'll push you.
Question while you can't hear, we've taken them to CAT, we've taken them to our housing projects and we plan to enhance and look for those opportunities.
Yep.
Um, but I, we were, basically, we invite them into our spaces as much as we can and we're working to improve um those opportunities. Right now, I had a conversation with our Community Development Department Director yesterday to help like schedule out the next eight months of what we think we need to do on CDBG and home funding in particular. Um, Housing Department is another place where we, um, they already have uh that history of doing those things. So we'll continue to enhance that and then working with LUT. Um, where we have uh not been great as a GR team in pushing is how we get commissioners to be able to take advantage of those special elected to elected relationships. So um Senator Merkley and Wyden obviously do their annual trip to every county. Um, and if you have plans to attend the most recent town hall that's been scheduled, which is Senator Merkley's, we will work with you if you want talking points or um particular things to highlight. We're already starting that list. Um, it's very soon, so we'll get it to you as quickly as possible. Um, but one of the places where it's important for us is um getting that feedback loop of when you know you're going to be in the same room as a federal official, elected official, you let us know. We'll tell you what you need to say or what projects we want to highlight. And then the final piece is um on those congressionally directed funding asks. Um, we do a lot of very fast work with your board. And that we're working through as um Jim mentioned, right now, um, recognizing the capacities of our comprehensive county team to make sure that we can accept the money at the end of the day and manage it appropriately. Um, but all of those things are places where we are working to enhance and um need to continue to provide those levels of service to your to your board, especially given what our team at VSA just talked about.
Let me also step in here. My district trumps all of your districts. But as you know, I am very democratic uh about the fact that there are five of us and we do the work together. So I try to ensure that it's equal opportunity. Uh, but if there is a need for immediate presence in Washington County, I mean, in Washington DC, um, our Van Skoyek and our GR team know that I can get on a plane in a heartbeat. Short of that, Vice Chair is the next one that reaches into that. Um, but we do have very limited uh travel and training budgets. So our team is working very carefully with us and Van Skoyek to get the highest return on our dollars. So that's why Aaron is really speaking to presence of our congressional delegation and the delegation staff here in Oregon.
I'd like to add one more thing to that. And I don't know that we've been as aware or leveraged it, but Work Systems Zink Board and Executive Board has historically gone to DC annually as well. And those opportunities give us, give us a chance to tell our story in the hallways and other places as well.
And Commissioner Rogers has participated in that in the past, so we haven't uh necessarily reported on it.
Well, that, I'm bringing it up now so that we can talk about what opportunities exist as a whole.
And uh, as our WSI board member, that's where you have to look at your travel and training budget and use it carefully in that role too.
This is paid for by WSI.
I'm not trying to get down into the details, but make the general observation.
Yeah. Oh, I agree a hundred percent. But I leverage is what I'm looking for.
So if I could uh ask a question here back on slide twelve under potential legislation, is the National Flood Insurance Program reauthorization? As you know, the BIOP has uh created a considerable amount of concern, um, especially for our coastal counties, which um that's what my district touches, Tellamook, that's at Columbia Counties. Uh, it'll have a significant impact on them. Of course, they wrote a letter, we did too. Ours, our conclusion was a little different than theirs, uh, but still, when we talk about a reauthorization, are we talking about uh some potential help there and pushing um this decision back?
Which which decision do you mean specifically?
Well, the what they've done, the uh, the mandate that they've come out with, the um, for the counties to comply with the with the flood.
The Endangered Species Act Biological Opinion, we've had a couple of meetings with the senators' offices. Um, and and Van Skoyek and myself to talk through that. Um, I did note that, I saw that reauthorization and went, ooh, opportunity. Um, but I haven't, just having had that click this morning, have not had that conversation with VSA. I, it is something that I have mentioned to Senator Wyden's office in past iterations. Um, I'm not sure, given the change in um, the Senate and the House, there might be more opportunity for that at this point in time. But it's a a decision that needs uh outreach to our fellow counties, the cities in Oregon and our uh state leadership about all of those resources, if there's one way or another that we can solve for that.
I guess what I was, yeah, what I was asking was, what does reauthorization mean? Does that just mean they're going to continue the funding or are they going to have hard conversations about this?
Sure. So the National Flood Insurance Program is has been, has had a lot of issues and challenges um in terms of being solvent, uh, being effective. Um, they implemented risk rating two point O, which is a whole new way to determine the policy levels, the policy fee uh rates. Um, so uh, so those are all regulatory actions that were taken during the Biden administration. The new administration has talked about relooking at all that. So the the flood insurance reauthorization can address and plans to address how long to reauthorize it, what will be the rating tool? Would the, will the rating tool be revisited or reexamined? And the Trump administration said he wants to do that, because when they implemented risk rating two point O, a significant amount of policies went up in price. Um, how to make it, how to leverage private insurance uh to uh to start relieving the debt and have give folks options. So there's a lot of issues related to the program. And so if they reauthorize it, they have to address all those national issues with the program. Um, so right now, it's just all the old rules apply because it's just being extended now till March fourteenth without its own dedicated reauthorization bill to address these issues. So hopefully now that they're passed, they're into a new fiscal year, after reconciliation and all the hot button items, maybe this summer, there'll be some legislators on the Hill that'll reintroduce a new reauthorization bill and address these issue. Typically, a couple of versions of the bills will be posted and released by members that are passionate about this in their districts. And we'll do an analysis and compared comparison of what are in those bills. But we'll have to see which ones have enough momentum and support to get over the finish line. Um, as this this reauthorization just keeps getting kicked down the, down the road each time there's a bill that comes through. John, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just add, and I say, I I think the short answer is that it's certainly an opportunity. It can be tough to, you know, you can, you can add almost anything to any bill. Um, the question is, is the bill going to get passed? And um, and sometimes it's tough to get a specific state issue resolved in it. Um, but it's certainly an opportunity. And and I mean, that that's the kind of stuff we're monitoring and making sure that if there is an opportunity to do something, we'll certainly follow up with Aaron and and let you guys know.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? I'll make a question for Fai. Thank you. John and Maggie and Big Boss Jim, good to see you, all three of you. Um, I I won't compete with Commissioner Willie and say I represent the best district, District One, but because he'll destroy me with his experience, but I represent District One. Uh, I didn't get to say that earlier, but I think you know that. Uh, my, my, I don't, I'm not sure if it's a question or maybe a suggestion. And this is something that um I was actually inspired by what Chair Harrington said around being um strategic and um supporting our delegation. So I'm wondering, and not to add any extra task on your plate, Aaron and team. Uh, but, you know, we're, I'm not sure how many trips are going to happen to DC. Um, I think you referenced this earlier. Aaron, around J-PAC and um what that conversation, if Oregon is going to attend DC and whatnot. One of your slides, Jim, and I think this is the slide you were covering, you referenced the, around the, under the immigration cities, um, sanctuary cities. Oregon is actually a sanctuary state. Did you mean to say the state's federal funding will be impacted, which circles down to cities? I think you specifically called out for cities, so I was wondering clarification on that. But my suggestion or my question around is in in regards to being supportive to our delegations, is there a way you can provide us a list of committees that our congressional delegation sit in? And then plug in some of the projects Aaron Doyle gave you to try to see this will be a, you know, this committee member is a ranking member on this committee. It would be really good to have this particular conversation around this project, so we can forever carry those talking points. And if we ever see in the community that congresswoman uh or the senators, then we can have sort of a strategic, value adding conversation of that specific project um or specific project. So I don't, so basically, a list of committees our congressional delegation sit in, who's a ranking member. a ranking member, and then what project will be really a high priority for us to, anytime we see that member to have.
Well, hang on a sec. I think the ask in terms of our congressional delegation, what their committee assignment, subcommittees, is, is great and well-founded. With regard to the other detail, there's two things. There's our adopted state and federal agendas. We already have that. Nobody needs to create that. That list of projects is already there. That is the board position. The second thing is with regard to this newly forming information. And we already have a commitment from both our staff as well as Van Skoyek to continue to keep us informed as there is clarity, as there are proposals. So I really don't think there's any additional detail that we need beyond what they've actually said they will be getting to us.
I think one piece that I think will help because the Senate and House at the federal level don't necessarily name their committees in a way that's transparent as to the topics they might be covering. We might provide a little bit of detail. So when we provide that committee list, we can add the, you know, finance and revenue will cover things like the private activities bond things. So that way you know when you're talking to Senator Wyden, that's a key issue. So we'll just do a little bit of that clarifying, I think that, but, and tie it back into all these things. And as we know more detail, and we know you're running into other elected officials, we will make sure that you have those specifics that we have at the same time.
And I always remind myself that they have, they have their own staff and committee staff. So they tend to be very well, more, more well-informed about the details and the mechanics than even us.
I, I have a question, and this is for Erin as well as Van Skoyek. You know, when I look at our congressional delegation from Oregon, we do have one Republican, and I'm wondering how we leverage that opportunity. I assume it's most likely through AOC, but nonetheless, I, I just wanted to ask for clarification there.
Well, and their, the congressional delegation's only, own rapport amongst their Oregon caucus. I rely upon that.
Yeah, I, I mean, AOC is one of our best ways into Representative Bence's office. I have, when he was first elected, had the opportunity on a J-PAC trip to go back and, and meet with him, kind of sitting in a smaller room. And I worked with Rep. Bence when he was a state representative, so kind of building that rapport. But I will say that from what we've seen publicly about, you know, co-signed letters and things like that, I don't know that there's a cohesion amongst our delegation between the two sides of the aisle. I'm hopeful that will continue to be worked on and changed. I think one of the places that we also consider is that Representative Bence is important in the natural resources space for things like the Secure Rural Schools Act and Pilt, which is money, not a ton of money in Washington County, but there's a little bit there and we like it and we'd like it to continue. And that's another area where we join in with our AOC or AOC C colleagues to, to take advantage of access to that office. How the delegation chooses to improve their relationships with one another, unfortunately, it's not within our control at this point in time. I don't know if there's anything, Jim, you want to add about how, I, one of the reasons why Van Skoyek is such an important partner in this is that they are truly bipartisan in their hiring and in their portfolio taking on. So they work with a lot of the leadership offices, not necessarily within our delegation. So I don't know if you want to add to that, Jim?
I think the only thing I can add is if there's an opportunity for regional support for any, any issue, any initiative, funding, we will try to get broader regional support for your initiatives. And when we can do that, it moves the needle a little bit in terms of decision-making on the Hill. So we'll follow Erin's, Erin's lead on that, on which issues could potentially be supported regionally.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie?
No, I'm good. I just listening, so thank you very much. I always appreciate coming to DC and certainly the, the help that you guys give us to have meetings and using your facilities. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's our pleasure.
I think that is it for us for today. So thank you again for investing your time and energy to help us be settled and prepared for the months and weeks ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity and excellent feedback today, and we'll, we'll take that back. It's very, very helpful to get your viewpoint. So thank you very much on behalf of all the team.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
You, too, Commissioner.
Take care.
Take care.
Well, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. Ms. Ober, would you like us to take a break and then start topic two or just go right into topic two?
A break would be excellent.
Okay. Fifteen-minute break. We'll be back at 10 minutes for the hour.
Glad to hear it.
Okay.
My bags are packed and in the back of my car.
Welcome back, commissioners and back to your heart.
Well, thank you, Clerk Moss, for keeping, keeping me honest and on task. We're now on topic to, at our roundtable last Thursday, we were talking about town halls and budget planning, and we left it that we gave direction to our staff to look at calendars and all the competing priorities for time and come back with a proposal. So, this is, we're here, take it away, Philip.
Okay, thank you, Chair, thank you, Board, Philip Bransford, Communication Officer, Administrative Office, this should be quick. I have to start with an apology, though, we didn't, we, we got our wires crossed and we didn't get the single slideshow for you all ahead of time. It's now part of the packet, it's linked, and you should have hard copy in front of you so you can see it better, okay, so, our apologies.
We also have a slide that's projecting.
Yes, and it's going to, oh, I guess I do that, you can see that it's just one slide. So, the purpose here is just to get a head nod from you all, not to burn up a lot of time because we had a great conversation the other, the other day in your roundtable, just to make sure that we are on target as staff, as to what we should pursue. This is a different kind of timeline than what you saw last time, meant to maybe make it a little bit more clear. As you might recall from years past, we had a swim lanes chart, this is, this is a chart with two swim lanes in it, the first one across the top is, you might recall from last week is the, the Budget Committee activities and the budget product, if you will, that's rolling out, that's all, that's what, that is all happening in that top row, we added a March 18th Budget Committee update, which I understand we'll be working towards to convene on that date. The second row is the Communications and Outreach activities that would occur, and here, what I'd do is draw your attention to a couple of ideas, the first one would be Board hosted update session, we'll call it a Budget Update Session, for your colleagues and elected officials at cities and special districts, and we had, we've scoped out three potential dates, keeping in mind how many city council meetings happen, you know, evenings, of course they do, throughout the, throughout the work week, so these three, the, you know, March 19th, April 4th, and April 7th are, look pretty viable to us, we were looking at your calendars, of course, as well, and let's see, April 7th, I'll start with that one, it is a Monday, that works well for our city partners, that is the evening, the first, I think that's the first Monday in April, so that would conflict a little bit with ACRE, so we would, we can, we can, we can navigate around that, convene a little earlier than ACRE convenes, if you will.
I was actually wondering if we could include ACRE, and maybe, that might be, or
No, they're not elected.
All right, I was trying to.
Thread the needle.
Yeah.
Problem solving is good.
We can certainly come to ACRE at any of their.
Yeah, we need to at some point, but, yeah, I think that this is an elective meeting, we can, the ACRE group, we can work with that, that's, I don't have any problem with that.
Happy to help with that. The other, the other two meeting dates, what, the, the March 19th is a Wednesday, April 4th is a Friday, nobody has a city council meeting on a Friday.
And we've only tried an elected official convening on a Friday once, but the problem at that time was the invitation only went out through Outlook calendar events, necessary but totally insufficient, so, we learned our lesson there, so, Friday, the 4th, maybe doable, so, doodle pole time.
Okay, we can follow up on that.
With the intended audience. But all, I think all three are viable.
I'm gone on the 19th, but that's, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking about only choosing one of these?
That would be the idea.
The 4/7 date, the Monday, and you're probably already tracking this, that is the night the 12th City Council typically meets, whether they have a meeting scheduled that night.
Yes, I think they're the second Monday, we will work, we'll work through that, thank you.
So, so I think what we're saying is, these are three viable dates for us as a group, and go work with the intended audience in order to gain as many city councils, mayors, and special district electeds as possible.
Will do, thank you. We put some color coding to this chart, the content, the focus of your, of that session that we'll go ahead and work, work towards Chair, would be an update as to the general fund forecast and other, other matters that precede any, anything to do with the proposed budget, other than it's the background, it's the backdrop for what, what the, what the next phase is all about, which is the blue phase, that's the rollout of the proposed budget, and there, we were looking, as we were talking the other day, we were looking at, or I'm sorry, May 12th as a potential community focused information session regarding the budget, if your board, we'd like to direct us to, to support that.
So, am I correct in understanding this is more of the background for the community, not to be confused with public input during budget committee meetings, public hearings?
Well.
Yeah, see, that's where I'm, I'm concerned that that date, so close to the proposed budget date, people are going to use for advocacy as opposed to understanding, I mean, it just puts them in the bind, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, Chair, and we look to your board for, for direction here, the thought behind the 12th would be, it's a, it's before your Budget Committee begins its presentations and the, the decision point on the 20th, so, one advantage for the community would be, it's ahead of that process and they're wel, they would be welcome to join into that process, but your point, Chair, is well taken, we would.
But is it, I think I may be missing a crucial point, it is really trying to get their attention, not only on the background, since it is an open community forum, maybe a little bit more background than they would have noticed without attending that, but also, this is the proposed budget, and having a.
Presenting it to the community.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I like that concept.
Yeah, I think that is the part that was missing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and by that point, the, the slide deck, if you will, would just be the, the County Administrator's Budget message, that's all that we'll have prepared by that point, but that, that would, as you've experienced in the, the past, that does provide background and indication of what this proposed budget is all about, but the proposed budget would be live on the webpage by that point, so that's, that's where you are in that blue.
Well, see, this is where I'm struggling a little bit, I get it, on the proposed budget, but we tend to use various vehicles to help our fellow elected officials understand the journey we've been on, such as those two great slides where you've summarized the last four fiscal years, so, I think for the 12th community session, we're going to need the proposed budget presentation as well as.
The background.
Some of the background.
Yes.
Right? Because I'm not, I mean, it's asking a lot of the community to have an appreciation for the problem solving we've done over these years, but I think this forum for them is centered on helping them appreciate that we really have been on quite a problem solving journey over years.
But to your point, we're not gonna, the point of that session is not to start taking a bunch of detailed testimony.
Right.
About the content of the budget, and so, how that's set up probably matters quite a bit as far as.
Yeah.
Expectations and the way it's laid out.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And so, I think that, Philip, you've done a great job of being a moderator for us for various board town halls, we, we may need you or someone else to play the moderator role and say, "Thank you, we appreciate, that isn't a question appropriate for this forum, but we've noted it and we'll, we'll just enter it into the record for the Budget Committee."
Sure, we, we're happy to do that, as well as point them to the committee sessions.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Which has public input.
Absolutely.
Into those meetings.
Yep.
Yep.
Can I ask a clarifying question here, at this session, session, this community-based session that's gonna happen on May 12th, say I'm a community member, I attend, I have questioned some of the content that you presented, could I raise my hand and ask that question?
Yeah, if it's on the content.
Yeah.
In that meeting, yes.
Okay, so they could engage the, any, any of the board members there and say, "Hernan, I have this question," and then we take that question, or would we provide it?
But, you know, it, it's really going to be, if, they may have a question about why the CAO has proposed something that she has highlighted in her presentation that night, but it really may get to the detail, so, that's where the moderator's going to help that community member understand, no, that's really digging into the detail versus the general information as well as historical background.
Okay.
But it could be that what the person is talking about gets to the nature of, I'm just gonna speak hypothetically, state mandated, and, you know, I'm really just grasping here, well, you know, we like specialty courts, why are you not seek, why in your proposed budget are you not seeking additional grants, or, you know, community corrections gets directed state funding, why don't you just change that over? So, that's a question, a methodology question with regard to budgeting that says, well, no, those, that's directed spending, that isn't general fund spending, so, I think that goes to building the public's knowledge about public budgeting, which is great, and doesn't just say, point it to a Budget Committee, so, we're, this is the first time we're trying this approach, you're spot on, we're gonna be learning by doing, all of us.
I'm on the journey.
Excellent, thank you, and then, the, the only other parts here that are, are in play a little bit here are, towards the end of the process there, we were.
Are you in the green?
I'm in the green now.
And I have a blue question.
Okay, back to blue.
This, under proposed budget focus, the one in the middle, May 14th through 16th, Budget Committee meetings, it's my understanding that we only have posted Budget Committee, I may be behind, Budget Committee meetings, the 14th, the 15th, and the 20th, not the 16th.
Oh, okay, there may be a, like a holding place meeting, I ought to go back and find out.
So, what we tried to make sure is that we were clear on when the, the Q and A material would be done, and that's where the 16th, now, my, I printed the document, but it doesn't have a date on it, so I can't.
The 16th on the bottom of it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, that's in line with the detailed calendar, but, yeah, so, I just want to make sure that the final version of this slide we put out as a result, you know, for the updated packet for today, all the dates are correct.
Oh, yes, you're right, the 16th is that, when the FAQ is to.
So.
So I may have, I may have scrubbed that.
So, we have May 14th and May 15th, not the 16th, and then we have May 20, which is also here, so.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
My error, though, that should have been a 15, thank you.
Team effort.
And then the, that, yes, that green quadrant there is, where, where the, the environment now is such that the board, or the budget has been approved, it's coming to your board on the 17th of June for adoption, in the, in the com swim lane there at the bottom, our thought is perhaps that, that summer, there's a state of the county, and potentially a board's hosted information session for the community later in the fall, perhaps if people come back from the summer vacations and such, good part of that is driven by staff capacity, frankly, but we're, we're thinking along those lines, if your board has to, has any guidance for us.
Well, especially since we've, with this proposed budget, we've made the assumption that we're going to have to take a serious look at service levels, state mandated, not mandated, discretionary, historical, you name it, we don't know where we're gonna end up, but certain things are in play at a level that we've not had to dig into in prior proposed budgets, so this would be the loop back on that. Being transparent with our community and continuing to advance our community's knowledge of how our public budgeting serves their interests in serving community. I said far more than I thought I would, commissioners, are you okay with this plan?
I, thank you, Philip, and I, I really like seeing it laid out this way, I appreciate the delineation vertically and horizontally, my, as you were talking, Chair, about the potential questions that we would get in the blue segment, and how you did a good job of outlining what we could answer, I think, I really want to make sure that we are prepping the people that are participating about the limited nature of information, and, because I can see you saying repeatedly, that's, we can't answer that question because of this, and I think by setting the stage appropriately, we will reduce the number of questions that go to the actual budget document that we don't, will not have at that date.
Yeah, I think that it goes towards the meeting announcement page, is going to have to say, here's an example of a kind of question, we're not gonna be able to answer that tonight.
But if you want to ask a different, if you want to ask that one, then where do you go to do that?
And when?
Right, exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
And so, I, I, that, those are both really good ideas.
Sure, then we can do a lot of outreach as we head into the, to the blue.
It's just so uncomfortable to be in those meetings when we keep repeating, we can't answer that yet, and so I think by providing that communication.
Set the stage.
Good points.
And also reminds folks too, that we do take questions electronically, so, this isn't the, the only place to ask the question.
Cool, and will these be in person?
Are you, are you?
That was the, the idea, because we can use, you know, the auditorium, for example, we can use the, the recording, the cameras are already in there, and we can have a YouTube simple file.
I was just asking if it was gonna be online, in person, I didn't have that context.
Yeah, we can, we can work it through those details.
I like the in-person.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yep, great.
But if we, if we were to, if we were to offer a, a virtual component to the community, or, or either, either of them, would that be, would that be a problem for your board, for either the?
I'm fine, if, if your question is, are we fine with hybrid?
Like a hybrid, yeah.
I'm fine with hybrid, as long as we have the capacity, and I think we do, yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Thumbs up? Okay, terrific, great, well, at this juncture, we are going, well, question, Ms. Ober, would you like us to bump up topic four?
Please.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, we're gonna bump up topic four, and, which is estimated at 45 minutes, and then, that means we'd only have one afternoon topic, so. that means we'd only have one afternoon topic. So terrific. Erin Doyle, 'cause you just can't get enough of us today.
Yeah.
We can't get enough of you is probably more like it.
Yeah.
I need to stop teasing the client.
No, it, uh, no, I, I just want to.
Over my quote.
We don't have any written materials for this, 'cause this is more of a conversation to have with the board. But as we've talked through the advocacy training and the work about how we work as a team of commissioners, G R, staff, when it comes to how we are approaching ourselves in, um, let me just get through this. As we're approaching the state legislative session, there are, you know, there's a need to know what everyone is doing and how we are communicating to one another needs to be clear about sharing information about when staff is showing up, how staff is showing up, when commissioners are showing up, so the G R team can provide the best support to both sets of advocates, is how I will, um, preface this. And so I just wanted to remind the board of what we do have and then have a conversation about the sufficiency of that. So that's my goal here today. I'm hoping we don't need 45 minutes for it, but if we do, we do. So essentially, what we have done in the past is we've used one key tool to communicate, and we have been adapting that tool. And that is the weekly memo that the G R team provides every Friday. It's intermittent in the interim, and it is regular.
Robust.
Robust, detailed in, during the session. Attached to that during the session is also what we call the bill tracking report. That's provided to you on a weekly basis. Those tools continue to be our plans for communication. In the, the purpose of the memo is to provide some of that detailed information, dig in a little bit about the politics and that information. And then the bill tracking report is kind of like a, is a status update. It also provides links to the bills and allows visibility into what positions we're taking, how deeply the impacts are, and why it's on the commission's report, because, um, this year, already, there have been 200, no, 2,284 bills pre-session filed.
That makes my head hurt.
Yep. Fortunately, the rest of my team is reading them right now, uh, not me. I'll get to them later. Uh, but we use those bills and then a tracking tool that we, um, use called Bill Tracker. It's very cleverly named. Um, we can run reports from that. And so we don't inundate you with every single bill that we are tracking. We rise the, the needs to knows to the places where the commission is either prioritize things or there's a profound impact to the counties. So consider those priority one, being our highest priority, priority two bills. Those that we're very deeply engaging in, so that the board is aware of the activities we're taking. Or if there are bills that we were like, oh, this has a specific impact in a specific district, we add that to the, to the bill tracker. What we are working.
Erin, let me stop you for a second and ask you, what agenda item are you discussing right now?
Item four.
It's item four.
It's not posted online. I'm going off of what's online right now.
I think they mean item three.
Yeah, it's item three.
I don't have. Item four online is clean water services.
Can we pause for a second? The posted agenda, originally, when I came in this morning, had this as item four. Kevin updates the posted agenda and reorganizes agenda items to reflect what we're actually doing so that the community knows. So for the original posted agenda, this was government relations sync up with county systems. That is the topic she's speaking to. Doesn't matter if it's three or four now. That is the title.
And we're on time. That's the good news.
See, that's on item, the government relations.
It's not updated.
No.
So is everybody clear? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so what the government relations team has been working on as we've evolved these two tools is making sure that we are expressly coordinating with staff so that we can provide the information up to the board about when staff comes down to Salem to testify and provide the county position. We know that there is a lot of really good staff that is well-respected in their industries and in their roles and obligations that end up on like, um, their association boards who also do work. And we are working to improve that level of coordination to make sure that our staff is part, uh, our G R staff is part of those conversations. So, um, I'm going to use Nate as an example. Our community corrections director has been the, um, president of the Community Corrections Association. Or at least for last year, I believe he's still the, the president. He does not go down and not tell us. Um, and when he does go down, we coordinate with our G R staff as well as that association. And not every association is as robustly, um, active in the session. And we are improving those lines of communication on a day-to-day, uh, on a weekly basis, on a daily basis sometimes, because there's a lot of associations across the portfolio of work that we do.
But that same working rule applies for each of us as members of the Washington County Board of Commissioners.
Correct. And the other key rule in those situations is that anyone who is down there for an association representing the work that they're doing on behalf of the county sticks to the county's principles. They work here, your board directs their policy. You've set our, um, priorities and our, um, principles, and those guide the work and engagement that they do. So my, as we continue to work through the session, we're making sure that that information is shared back. It's usually, it's sometimes a challenge, often a challenge, to let you know ahead of time, given the pace at which things change, when things get scheduled for hearings. But we will at least work to give a more perfect, but it will never be perfect, representation of who did come down and the testimony they provided. One of the other things that we've managed to, to improve in these tools in the last year or last session or two is, um, making sure that testimony that is written is also shared as part of those memos. It's captured in the bill tracker, so that your board has that set of information and talking points. The, the next step in that evolution is when, for example, we have a commissioner come down and we've drafted the talking points, ensuring that all of you have those talking points. That's the next stage in that evolution. It's becoming a natural part of how I make sure we're collating all that information together. It's a lot of work for my team to put those two documents together. They spend a lot of time on Thursday evening and Friday morning, making sure that we have the most up-to-date information included and that it's written in a way that it's not all insider baseball, where you're like, I don't understand any of the words in this memo, because that's how lobbyists talk, um, but also making sure you have a clear and concise bit of information. I am aware of one other tool that we are working on implementation, but it's not just a G R tool. It's the intergovernmental calendar. And, um, I, we will work to popularize that with other departments. It's kind of been one of those hit or miss tools that we have, but it is supposed to be included in updates to your boards. Or it, it's accessible to your board. Right now, for example, the Housing Department has all of its S H S updates to city councils included in it. And the intention of that calendar is to keep folks informed about when staff is talking to other elected officials. It's going to be impossible to do that effectively for purposes of, um, individual meetings with representatives. The timing of that might not work out to be as, um, edifying, but we will make sure that the information is shared as we have it instead. So those are the tools that we have in place. This is why I'm hoping this isn't a 45-minute conversation. But I wanna make sure that we're meeting the board need, board's needs within the capacity that we have to both do the work and inform on the work. So with all of those words, I'd like to turn it back to your board to, um, talk through the other half of this, as well as ask any questions about that tool of how you all want to make sure that conversations are, um, lifted up to each other that you're having with elected officials. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair, to ask me any questions. And then, um, I will help facilitate as I can.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions in terms of the tools and the mechanics that Erin went over thus far?
Yeah. The, um, I know that the, the cities in Washington County, some of them have, um, government relations folks, some of them don't. So do we kind of coordinate with those folks? And how do you go about doing that? 'Cause that's an additional layer of, you know, communication.
Yeah. Um, um, what the Washington County Government Relations Team does is we have traditionally held routine meetings with other G R staff, um, within the county, um, during the session. So it's not weekly. I can't remember what the cadence is that we've set. But like, I think it's every other week we sit down during the time when we can't access legislators. That's the only time we ever meet. Um, and we talk about those shared levels of information. Like, public records bills impact all of us, so we'll talk through that. Or give each other a heads up about things like that. We've never reported back on those meetings. That's, they're, they're very inside baseball. Like, sometimes it's literally being like, can you talk to this representative about this particular thing? Another way in which we coordinate on a slightly bigger level is we have weekly meetings that Metro puts together that we participate in that brings in a lot of public agency lobbyists. And it is a very large room in which we all hit the highlights of the big policy issues and make sure we're all coordinating. It is, um, public agencies from the state, region, county, local, and special district lo, uh, levels are all in those meetings. So we're just finding the path of, um, things. We also meet weekly with all of the county lobbyists across the state, 'cause a bunch of counties have professional internal lobby, it's internal lobbyists. And A O C. A O C coordinates those meetings. We do those on a weekly basis as well. So those are the places where we do a lot of that coordination on shared interests and making sure we're aware of each other's, um, boundaries and limits. And sometimes we ask A O C to do very specific things, um, like, write this letter, and then sometimes they do it. So that's how we coordinate those things. We tend, we don't take the contents of those meetings outside of those rooms very often as a matter of strategic poignancy.
Well, and, uh, the other, the secondary reason why I asked that question is because, as you know, I work with Palma County Commissioners, Clatsop County, but, and they have a very limited resources from the standpoint lobbyists and, um, so sometimes we have conversations, and I appreciate the fact that when I come to you and ask you about something that is not necessarily county related, related, but certainly like COOPAC related, that you, uh, you and your team follow up on that. So thank you for doing that. We expanded the part of it that I needed.
And that's where A O C has been a vital partner, partner in that, 'cause often, that's what A O C does is they support all of the counties that are members. And then we enhance and specify what Washington County needs in those rooms.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, what I hear you describing is sort of what you try to do to communicate and also control the chaos that is sort of inherent in the way Oregon does its, you know, legislative state activities over very relatively short periods of time. This is a longer session, but that's still not, I mean, it just, it forces a lot of work to happen in a short period of time. Every session I've been involved in where I've been in, you know, even in, in charge of certain advocacy activities with the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, it is always very chaotic. And you're describing systems that I think try to bring some sort of structure to that chaos and, and, uh, but I think we all also have to just accept the fact that it, it is going to be chaotic with the way that we do state legislation here.
Go ahead.
Couple comments. Uh, first of all, I depend on that Friday report, and I, I, I really read it closely because, uh, you know, I'm going through my own checklist of contacts and information that I have. So I, I really like that, and I, I also follow the bill tracker. The, the, the place that I have concern is what our individual relationships are around this table. And I know you're managing that, uh, Erin, to the best of your ability. But I think that it would be beneficial if we, if we shared, for example, uh, the overall power mapping that you, I, I don't know if that was the intention there or not. You don't, you don't agree, Chair?
It was not.
No, I said that was not the intention.
Oh, it was not our intention to bring forward that, that power map. What, that is a, a piece of the tools for as we develop specific strategies around specific priority work. How we can most effectively facilitate participation by the board.
And that is, that is a tool for us to have our individual conversations, conversations with our G R team members.
Okay, then what I would ask is that we are transparent amongst ourselves about conversations that we've had.
Historically, I know we're a new board, and we're reminding ourselves of our operating procedures. Historically, for the most part, with a few exceptions, we've been good about reporting in during board communications.
And case in point, if the PISA is going to talk with a, a particular, uh, representative, I will talk, you know, I, I, and I'm sure, Erin, you will be the, the traffic controller here, but I don't wanna step on that relationship either and interfere. So, you know, I think, and so the knowledge between us, I think, is important as well.
I mean, like, what I'm hearing from that is we need to, we've already talked about this, but we need to make sure the air traffic controller knows that that conversation's happening. Presumably, they helped guide and direct the need for the meeting. But like, irrespective of that, if you have a sidebar conversation about a topic that's on the county agenda spontaneously, that, you need to know that too.
Yeah, that, that feedback loop is incredibly important. And I will also just point out, while I am the person sitting in this chair right now, I have three other members of my team that you can also talk to. You don't have to try to find me. You can find any one of the government relations managers.
And those are considered equal, uh, for our purposes. Okay.
What I would also put forward is that there are so many different events that we all go to where you have a spontaneous opportunity.
Yeah.
That you didn't, you didn't plan on.
Anticipate.
But, but you wanna make sure that you take the opportunity to talk about the county message. So, but I think it's important you do that, you come back and report to government relations. Team what, what your conversation was.
I will also add that the staff assistants are part of my team, so if you can't, because the G R team will be in Salem for the vast majority of the next six months, myself included, and Lee. If you can't find one of us, can't go to hold of one of us, your, your staff assistants are part of our team and can feed that information back into me as well. So it's a team of support as you go through this, and I will work to intentionally have conversations with them. So they can also help you, help keep us informed about those events that you're, you're going. And that's also where your weekly, um, insight into each other's calendars can become important.
Alrighty. Anything else from anybody? We had a great training session on advocacy, and, uh, out of that, we were very careful to stay in bounds of training and noted some potential topics for either future training or future discussion. And we're working, I just wanted to let the board know that we're working on that. Anything else on this whole topic? Did I forget to raise something I should have or come back to?
Not that I recall at this point.
Okay, well.
Sometimes I can talk really fast, so thank you all.
The full 45 minutes with us, so there we go. Alrighty, so at this junction, uh, we're done with the non-executive session portion of our roundtable topics for today. So before we adjourn, uh, I would ask my colleagues for a motion on the executive session and let it be clear that we are convening promptly at 2:00 P M for the executive session. a motion on the executive session and let it be clear that we are convening promptly at two P M for the executive session.
There's no possibility of, I'm only asking because of my travel to county college. Is there any possibility of starting that at one?
No.
Okay.
So, word. Well, that was asked and answered previously. It's not a new idea. So we have a motion to adjourn or reconvene at two P M for the Clean Water Services C W S executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero sub two sub F as well as sub H to discuss exempt records and potential litigation.
Some of.
Second.
All those, you're not going to be able to attend the executive session. So Commissioner Trees, could you second it?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Our roundtable is, the public session of the roundtable is hereby adjourned. Thank you.